This is weird. I'm not used to sitting over here. Weird this way.
Want to switch? You want to switch?
How are you doing?
Very, very, very busy.
And he can come in, that's fine. We've got the field trip and then we've got to go in.
Okay. All right, I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the Louisville School Board, Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace.
Here.
Mrs. Horvath.
Here.
Mrs. Elmer.
Here.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. Wallace. Thank you.
Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'm sitting there.
Oh, yes.
Wow. Am I charged yet for that?
Head of the table.
The board believes that it is the responsibility of the school system to ensure that each graduate is college and career ready. To these ends, an environment of high expectations and opportunity shall be created that fosters scholarship, citizenship, and develops within each student the ability to become a productive and responsible member of society. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. I'll move.
Second.
Moving on, superintendent's reports and recommendations. Oh, cool, sorry. Roll call.
Mrs. Grace.
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer.
Yes.
Mr. Seibert.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace. Thank you.
Now superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Yes, I ask for the board's approval for a cross-country field trip.
Need a motion, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Seibert and Mrs. Elmer. Any discussion?
Yes, this is a cross-country invitational to Louisville, Kentucky. It's this coming Saturday. That's why we put it onto this agenda. We had seven runners qualify and they will be taking school transportation. It's a day trip. It will not be overnight.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer.
Yes.
Mr. Seibert.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Mrs. Grace.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you. I need a motion to go in executive session to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
I do not believe that this is legal to go in executive session and consider this matter. And I'm questioning that everything shared publicly along with email and video.
I'm sorry, but the video cannot be shared publicly because it has children in it.
Let me ask you a question on that. First off, I think we can answer it. Second, how many videos are shared with children of Little Miami Panthers?
Well, it's usually with permission of the parent and we don't know if you have, if it has been videoed of children that have not consented.
Let me ask you this question. All the, and this might be a question for Brad and the pastor. How many photos or videos on Instagram, they've been vetted to all the parents? When Little Miami Panthers does their video, interviews them always and children are walking back into their classes. Have all those children been vetted?
They should be, yes.
Look, the answer is they should be, but they haven't been. Right? So we're going to go back here and we're going to pick and choose the outfits that we have. And I'm asking, I think you mean, deserves to see the incident that you guys are talking about. They deserve it. But the fact that women share all kinds of stuff to the community on social media and then not do it here. I think you deserve that.
We've had parents in the past that have been in our building for different reasons that have taken a photo. We've asked them to not post it too and they now sign stating that they will no longer take pictures in our buildings. We've actually had people that wouldn't abide by that and we actually didn't invite them back into our buildings because they couldn't abide by the rules that we have. It is a FERPA violation for us to share videos of people and we have a do not publish list in our buildings where any parent who doesn't want their child published, we know who those students are. Every time I take a picture, I ask the leader, I ask the coordinator, the teacher, whoever it is that has that group, is there a student in here that is a do not publish student? I check that every time before I post. If I am not sure of that, then I do not post it. I had a bus driver talk to me just the other day. She took our band to McDonald's and she said, I'm assuming since this is an outside venue that I can post how great this was. And I said, no, we hold ourselves to a higher standard. If there's a student in that group that is a do not publish student, that you should not be publishing that. So we hold everybody to the same standard.
So we have a first.
So maybe based on that, I would like to see maybe Brad, if we have time, in executive session, find some of his Instagram posts. I know you have one where Mrs. Morgan's on her unicycle and your principal's videoing her on unicycle. There's plenty of children in the background and there's no way possibly those children all could have been scanned. We have the Instagram posts at pep rallies. And again, I challenge the accuracy of what you said. I know it reads well, but in reality it doesn't. And what we're talking about here right now is the email that was sent that does not match the video. The community deserves to see it.
All right, we have a first and a second on the floor. I need a roll call, please.
Mrs. Elmer.
Yes.
Mr. Seibert.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace. Mrs. Grace.
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath.
Yes.
All right, we as a board have had a chance to review the video. Mr. Wallace, is there anything you would like to say?
Yes. To the Little Miami community, it is common sense and a common understanding that elected representatives must be provided unfiltered and unobstructed access to the facilities they are entrusted by their community to govern. How can anyone expect an elected representative to be prohibited and obstructed from free access to their district's property? The previous board under Bobby's direction has written a policy intended to restrict the people's voice by hamstringing your elected reps for impromptu visits to your community-owned property. Even though I totally disagree with that and any policy that obstructs us from doing our official duties, I jump through hoops. I went above and beyond by not only informing the principal, but I also notified the superintendent and the board attorney of my pending visit. This was a general interest visit. I also reported to the office and signed in. None of these notifications are required by law. A district policy is not law, especially when it obstructs official duties. This entire discussion of a board member conducting an unescorted visit is a red herring and a fruitless and meritless attempt to distract you from the real issues and problems which occur at the schools. Like a magician, they want the problems to disappear, but even after the show, the theatrics and the performances, the problems remain. When our public conversation and board business focus is on a board member doing his job the way the community wants him to do it, and unfortunately, not on improving student outcomes, increasing student safety, or how to improve transparency with the community we serve, it is embarrassing. Our superintendent Regina Morgan and board member Bobby Greis need to be reminded that board members work for the community, not for either of them. Board members are not outside visitors. All five of us are elected officials who have a duty to bring accountability and governance to the Little Miami School District. While each of us can conduct our board position the way we best fits our constituents, I take my duty and responsibility seriously. I will not be derelict in my duties to the Little Miami community. Board staff communication, this is the policy. The board members must recognize that their presence in school buildings could be subject to a variety of interpretations by school employees. If a visit to a school or classroom is made for other than general interests, board members shall inform the superintendent and make arrangements for visitation through the principal of the particular school. General interest visits are not defined as informal expressions of interest in school affairs and not as inspections or visits for supervisory or administrative purposes. Board members will indicate to the principal the reason for the visit, and then official visits by board members are carried out only under board authorization. None of this is law or necessary, but it is obstructive. Board members do not have to report a visit to anyone, nor do they have to give a reason. There is no law that describes board members' visits to district facilities. It would seem common sense that board members shall visit district facilities at any time without escorting or scheduling it. This district appears to be defying common sense, and this Little Miami community deserves better. It is believed that Mrs. Morgan and Mrs. Greis spent hours upon hours looking at surveillance videos for something they could conjure up as newsworthy. In the past month, Little Miami has had several safety incidents at several buildings and transportation, but my visit gets your attention. I'm asking that the unedited version of my visit be made public along with Mrs. Morgan's email she sent to the board. Again, this visit should be expected and be made by all board members. The community deserves better of both Bobby Greis and Regina Morgan. As I mentioned earlier, my purpose was a general interest visit. Considering what I observed, I am now committed to a formal visit to all the school buildings to observe our school policies. Your response and obstructive activity have caused confusion, strife, and chaos, and this community now has a crisis of confidence in your leadership. I am asking again for you to please stop the political agenda to distract our community from focusing on our primary goals: academic, student safety, and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Now I think we need to move on to our policy discussion.
All right, we as a board have had a chance to review the video. Mr. Wallace, is there is anything you would like to say?
Yes. To the Little Miami community, it is common sense and a common understanding that elected representatives must be provided unfiltered and unobstructed access to the facilities they are entrusted by their community to govern. How can anyone expect an elected representative to be prohibited and obstructed from free access to their district's property? The previous board under Bobby's direction has written a policy intended to restrict the people's voice by hamstringing your elected reps for impromptu visits to your community-owned property. Even though I totally disagree with that and any policy that obstructs us from doing our official duties, I jumped through hoops. I went above and beyond by not only informing the principal, but I also notified the superintendent and the board attorney of my pending visit. This was a general interest visit. I also reported to the office and signed in. None of these notifications are required by law. A district policy is not law, especially when it obstructs official duties. This entire discussion of a board member conducting an unescorted visit is a red herring and a fruitless and meritless attempt to distract you from the real issues and problems which occur at the schools. Like a magician, they want the problems to disappear, but even after the show, the theatrics and the performances, the problems remain. When our public conversation and board business focus is on a board member doing his job the way the community wants him to do it, and unfortunately, not on improving student outcomes, increasing student safety, or how to improve transparency with the community we serve, it is embarrassing. Our superintendent Regina Morgan and board member Bobby Greis need to be reminded that board members work for the community, not for either of them. Board members are not outside visitors. All five of us are elected officials who have a duty to bring accountability and governance to the Little Miami School District. While each of us can't conduct our board position the way we best fits our constituents, I take my duty and responsibility seriously. I will not be derelict in my duties to the Little Miami community. Board staff communication, this is the policy. The board members must recognize that their presence in school buildings could be subject to a variety of interpretations by school employees. If a visit to a school or classroom is made for other than general interests, board members shall inform the superintendent and make arrangements for visitation through the principal of the particular school. General interest visits are not defined as informal expressions of interest in school affairs and not as inspections or visits for supervisory or administrative purposes. Board members will indicate to the principal the reason for the visit, and then official visits by board members are carried out only under board authorization. None of this is law or necessary, but it is obstructive. Board members do not have to report a visit to anyone, nor do they have to give a reason. There is no law that describes board members' visits to district facilities. It would seem common sense that board members shall visit district facilities at any time without escorting or scheduling it. This district appears to be defying common sense, and this Little Miami community deserves better. It is believed that Mrs. Morgan and Mrs. Greis spent hours upon hours looking at surveillance videos for something they could conjure up as newsworthy. In the past month, Little Miami has had several safety incidents at several buildings and transportation, but my visit gets your attention. I'm asking that the unedited version of my visit be made public along with Mrs. Morgan's email she sent to the board. Again, this visit should be expected and be made by all board members. The community deserves better of both Bobby Greis and Regina Morgan. As I mentioned earlier, my purpose was a general interest visit. Considering what I observed, I am now committed to a formal visit to all the school buildings to observe our school policies. Your response and obstructive activity have caused confusion, strife, and chaos, and this community now has a crisis of confidence in your leadership. I am asking again for you to please stop the political agenda to distract our community from focusing on our primary goals: academic, student safety, and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Now I think we need to move on to our policy discussion.
Can I ask if we have a copy of what Mr. Wallace just read?
Could we have a copy of what you just read, he asked?
Sure. Sure. I don't have a copy now. We'll get you one, Wayne.
Thank you.
It'd be nice for all of us to have a copy.
We're recording it, though, right? Okay, it's on video, so...
All right, Mrs. Morgan, do you want to...
Yes, so through our policy discussions, we reviewed about 650 policies, and we have two policies that came up that had questions, and then there was one that there isn't a Neola policy that we've discussed in the past that has been asked to be discussed again. I have three policies, or three items. I have policy number 3112, Board Staff Communications. I have policy 0131, which is a legislative policy, and then I have the Flags and Display policy. We want to start with Board Staff Communications? We can. Or we can leave it to last. Either way is fine.
Well, I think the policy that we have on hand now definitely needs some more clarification, just because it would be easily misinterpreted, as with Dave. I don't always agree with Dave. I don't always think he's the most considerate guy, but he is an elected board member, and he should be able to carry, he should not be obstructed from going into buildings. That said, I think it's important to consider the administration, what the programming, what's going on inside the building. And sometimes with a board member roaming around, that can trigger some distrust and some concerns, and I just think we need to be aware of that.
I also feel like if I go into a building and I'm asked to wait and be escorted, I think that's probably what I would do. So I know it's, you know, it's not written down, but it's something that, it's just common sense that you would do what, you know, what you're asked. I, you know, I don't know what his reason was for going. If it were me, I would give a reason, you know? I just want to, I just want to see how things are arranged, or I just want to do this, or I just want to do that. I just feel like that's what I would do as a board member.
Are we discussing the executive session information?
No.
Are we discussing the policy?
Policy.
Because I would like, I would like to address those, though. First off, I was never asked, Bobby, by you, as to why I went on the visit. And if you look at our policy, no, I don't need to give anybody a reason for a general visit, which I did.
I didn't say that...
Nowhere does it say that I need to be escorted. I don't report to anybody in this room. I don't work for the superintendent, I don't work for the president of the board, I work for the community. So the people in the back of the room, the front of the room, those are the people that I represent, okay? I don't, I do not. And I will say, I think we probably need to look at leadership if they do not know who school board members are, and if they're unaware of the policy. That shows me that, Mrs. Morgan, your staff do not understand the policies at Little Miami, and that is quite concerning.
Thank you. I think right now we're discussing policy 3112. This isn't about Dave's visit, this is about the policy. So let's kind of separate the visit from the policy. What we just learned in executive session is private to executive session. So right now, the portion of the policy that was brought up into question was letter D, visiting buildings or classrooms. Dave, you read it earlier, this one is a little different, but very similar to what you read. Again, it says, "Board members must recognize that their presence in school buildings could be a subject to a variety of interpretations by school employees. If a visit to a school or classroom is being made for other than general interest, board members shall inform the superintendent or designee and make arrangements for visitation through the principal of the particular school. General interest visits are defined as informal expressions of interest in the school affairs and not as inspections or visits for supervisory or administrative purposes. Board members will indicate to the principal the reason for the visit. Official visits by board members are carried out only under board authorization." I think that's what we're discussing right now. So Mary, I appreciate what you said, that maybe it's not worded very well, and that there is some confusion in what the policy means. So I think that that's, kind of bringing us back on track, that's what we're discussing at this point.
So official visits, you need the permission, or at least to make the superintendent and the administrators aware. The general visits, you can just show up. It doesn't have to be, you don't have to make people aware of it ahead of time.
I think it says, sorry, yeah, I can pass out this policy for everybody. I have, when you pass it around, it is stapled, and the next policy we're discussing is behind it.
But then, I think once you're there, isn't that all?
I think it states that every time a board member comes, but here, we've had a first read on this policy. So this is our Neola first read. So we can change this, we can come back to a second, a first read again, not a second first read, but a first read again, with new language if we like. That's not a problem at all. Right now, what is in board policy is the OSBA policy. We are no longer a member of OSBA. We went through the Neola policy framework. This policy has had a first read, it is now ready for a second read. It cannot go to a second read. We can revise it, put it back on for a first read, and then go through the policy at that point. Does that make sense?
Right now, we're still addressing letter D.
D is the question from the policy, yes.
Grace, if it's possible, can I provide the board a few comments?
I'm sorry?
If it's possible, can I provide?
Sure.
Okay. So, when I read this, I think it can be subjected to some different interpretations, I would grant you that. However, if you kind of look at it from sentence by sentence, first of all, I think most board members could recognize that it's reasonable that there could be interpretations of you walking through a particular building by yourself, if nobody knew you were going to be there. What are you doing there? Why are you there? Oh my gosh, did we do something wrong, right? All those things that employees think of, because whether you believe it or not, you have a lot of power over the employment of individuals, because a lot of times their contracts go before you, right? Whether that be a collective bargaining agreement, where you're agreeing to a full agreement, or where you're agreeing to individual employment. And then, obviously, if you're there for other than general interest, you would make arrangements, probably because you're there because you're on some inspection, like maybe you're there because we're looking at the facilities for a facility improvement project, whatever that might be. But then, when I look at it, it says, you know, I don't know what, then the last line says, "Official visits by board members carried out under board authorization." Well, what's an official visit? A general interest visit could still be an official visit. So it's like all over the place.
Yeah, in my mind, official business would be like the board has voted to send you on a board purpose.
Right. But then, the other thing, too, is I don't know when this policy was first drafted.
This, 2013 was...
I mean, that may be when the last time they amended it, but I don't know when this particular section was drafted. The other concern I have from a legal standpoint is just the building safety. Every single individual that's in our buildings, if they're not under escort or supervision of a teacher or a staff member, has to be background checked. So we can't, like, even if vendors that are coming and working on our HVAC system, if they're not with a staff member, even though, they have to be background checked, right? So having people, board members, you're not background checked.
But we could be.
You could be, but you're not. So right now, that, given that situation, that's a potential problem. And then, you know, I guess you could say, well, it could be background checked, so you could do that, you could make that part of your policy. I'm struggling to understand why a board member would need to go in there without an administrative escort.
Well, what I was going to say is, maybe there's a scenario where you can come unannounced, but once you're in the building, in my opinion, the protocol should be that it's the same protocol either way, and you are not moving through the building by yourself. You're escorted by an administrator, either way. But yes, it shouldn't be unheard of that a board member could show up without notification. But once you're there, I feel like the policy should be the same either way. That makes sense.
I agree.
I disagree. First off, Bill, I question a couple of the things. I understand that board members must recognize their presence in school buildings could be subject to a variety of interpretations. They get nervous because they can hire and fire renew contracts, right? What about the superintendent? Do the superintendent recognize the fact that their presence could also cause stress and undue, with the, with the teachers? What about the principal? I imagine the principal's our evaluator, so we can keep going down this list.
Well, I think...
Hang on, hold on, Bill. But we can keep going down this list, right? I think it's the responsibility of the superintendent and the administration to make the employees aware of who the school board members are, and that's their job. If you get your feelings hurt, or you get nervous, I hate to say it, but I'm sorry. My job is not to make you feel good, my job is to represent the community, that's what they elected me to do. That being said, also, hang on, I'd like to, the next thing, we talk about safety in the buildings, okay? But again, if we're going to do policy or procedures, I think we need to be fair across the board. What's interesting was if Dave Wallace, a school board member, walks in the building unescorted, everyone runs around like the biggest security breach ever happened. But when Dave Wallace volunteered at a popcorn stand during the end of the school hours with children, nobody said anything. When Dave Wallace volunteered at the Christmas dinner, or excuse me, the Christmas luncheon, and I served the dinner to the children, not only did I serve the dinner, I walked up and down the hallway sweeping and putting away trash, taking bins, helping the janitor, but not one person questioned the security of Little Miami schools. It was not until I did a general visit. And if you look at the policy, a general visit, you do not need to, and I don't think we need to do that. I think honestly, I think the board members have to understand, this is our job, this is what we got elected to do. Go to the other districts. Mason, those school board members have badges, they can go in and out of buildings whenever they want.
Well, the way this situation has played out, clearly, there's something broken, because it shouldn't have played out this way, it shouldn't feel this way. So we really should just focus on clarifying our policy so that it makes more sense for all of us. So if we need to more specifically define a general visit and an official visit, is what I've heard so far, and that seems worthwhile. If you are thinking they need to know who we are, we could propose having a picture of the board in every building, so that we are more identifiable. I would rather talk about how we can fix this. So those are like three things I've heard so far, that make sense to me.
I like the badges. I like to get background checks and badges. That's my answer.
Board badges?
Yeah, yeah, to get us in and out of the buildings, and background checks. And I would agree that if you're walking along the hallway just reading what's on the walls, certainly, I think common sense prevails. I mean, as far as interfering with any instruction, but I think you should be able to observe this instruction. I think you should as a school board, that would be, that's our job. The community elects school board members to look at the schools, and it's our responsibility to ensure that Little Miami is doing all right. That's why we, that's why we evaluate the superintendent, that's why we evaluate the treasurer. I think it's silly, the fact that we evaluate the superintendent, and not, not with Mrs. Morgan, but just the superintendent in general, but yet, we then can't walk into the own building without being escorted? I mean, honestly, that just doesn't pass the common sense test.
Right, so that's why we're revisiting it and trying to flesh it out. But we do oversee Regina and Terry, they oversee the administrators of the buildings, and the administrators oversee the instruction that the teachers are giving.
Correct.
So if we need clarity with all of that, then we should take time to make sure we have clarity with all of that. It would be worthwhile in this process, so that we're not confused and nobody's feeling unduly angry because they don't think they have access to something they should. We need to just lay it all out and define it. So is there anything else that we need to, because I don't think we're going to be able to hash out every piece of this we're seeing.
I don't think so either.
But I think that is a very good start, and some of your requests are things that we should take into consideration.
I think it's something you should ask yourself, is, you know, number one, do you want a background check, board members? Do you want to say your right to go to a building is subject to your voluntary submission to a background check that you have to pass, right? Now remember, so that, you know, background checks are not public records, but there would be individuals that would have to see the results of that to verify, right? So that would be number one. Number two would be whether or not you'd want to give badges, so because obviously the badges would obviously define and identify who the person was, but then also you'd have to ask, is that going to have swipe access to get into the buildings? And then I think the third thing would be whether or not you feel that there should be any escort at any given time if a board member's in the building. And this is kind of a little bit of a conundrum, or not that, but sort of a little bit of a fuzzy area, because the board sets policy, but the administrators are really responsible for the safety and the procedures of the buildings. So the hope would be that you as a board and your administration could reach a consensus on what works for both of you, right? Like, okay, as a board members, we feel comfortable that we have the access that we would like to have to the buildings in a way and a procedure that works for us. And then the administration could say, well, it works for us, too, because it helps us with our concern about safety, and also helps with our concern about just the anxiety that it might put upon people when they're in that building, right? Because as much as, you know, there are going to be teachers that are probably not going to recognize you, there's going to be, you know, you talk about like volunteer situations, when people are out of building because there's activities going on, there's lots of volunteers, there's a different sense of, we're worried, as opposed to a Tuesday afternoon where somebody's walking around in the building and nobody notices or recognizes. So I think you have to kind of decide how you want that to be, and then kind of go from there, and then hope that you can reach consensus, because obviously, the board sets the policy, but there's a lot of direction and recommendations from the administrations regarding those things, and this is one where I would think there'd be more common interest than not, right? So...
We also have to agree on where we are releasing being the one that's setting the policy, because there are policies that I think administrators are allowed to be in control of within their domain, that we have to respect. I think there's a little bit of all of that.
Or procedures, but yes, you're exactly right.
Procedures, okay. I won't use the word policy there. So I think there's some give and take that is going to need to happen in this situation.
Diane, I think you hit it right on the head, is procedurally, we don't allow guests just to walk around the buildings. Yes, there are popcorn Fridays, yes, there are PTO events, there are carnivals, there are all kinds of different things where we bring in PTO members. A single person walking through the hallway wandering, it just doesn't happen. We have somebody that walks with that person if it's something that needs to happen. My perspective is, board members should always be allowed in a building at any time. We've talked about that. I've told you, if you want to walk through all of the buildings, happy to walk you through. I walked members of our Republican Party through the buildings one Saturday, Terry and I did, because there's nothing there to hide. We don't have anything to hide. Are there things that not everybody agrees with? Of course. A republic school, we have lots of different interests in our schools, but we don't have anything to hide. The thing that worries me is if we have people walking around all the time unescorted, that people don't know who they are, when somebody is walking around unescorted that shouldn't be there, it's going to be commonplace. And that's a security risk that I don't love. When we, when Dave was in the building...
Are we going back in the executive session, or are we going to...
No. When Dave was in the building, he didn't do anything, he just walked around the halls. There were students that looked, like, who is that? Hopefully, they went to their teacher and said, there's somebody in the halls, I don't know who it is. If there was an escort with him, that wouldn't have happened, because it would have been commonplace for somebody to walk through the halls with somebody that they knew, somebody they were familiar with. That's the worrisome piece, is we need to make sure that our safety protocols aren't limited... Happy for you guys to visit anytime you want to visit. That particular morning when Dave does visit, he told us that morning he was coming. He couldn't give us a time. I said, okay, that's not a problem. I called Dr. Harlemann and said, when he gets there, please walk around with him, follow our protocol. And so we were trying to accommodate somebody wanting to. I don't disagree. If a board member wanted to just show up, maybe they didn't want, I don't know, for whatever reason, and we would find somebody to walk around with you. That's not a problem.
Yeah, so then I would just like to propose that the policy states that you can have announced or unannounced, but once there, you would follow the procedure of having an escort. That's what I would like to propose.
I don't think we need a general interest or a specific interest, to be honest. If it's a board interest, it's a board interest.
Maybe we don't even need to like delineate two different types of visits.
You can specify while you're there, or maybe you don't need to. I don't know. That's up to you guys. But the piece that is important for me is more the piece that people are wandering aimlessly. And what that notion that gives to students when they don't know who you are. And they don't. We've got 1,500 kids up there. They don't know.
I can totally understand that.
And I would challenge, as far as knowing, I think that again, that's a failure on the administration of not letting the teachers and the students aware of who they are. As far as the policies, I agree 100%. The board sets the policies. The superintendent enforces the policies, and then the board is supposed to validate that the policies are being followed. And one thing that's very interesting, as we're gonna continue, I guess, to talk about my visit, as you spent 30, 40 minutes in there, right? How many backpacks did you witness that were not clear? Did you see any, Molly?
Like cleared?
Well, we have a backpack policy at the high school that requires clear backpacks.
Only if you're carrying them around during the day.
Yes. And my visit was during the day. So I want to ask you, as you spent 40 minutes and probably countless hours, how many of those backpacks, how many, I guess-
Non-clear, open-
Non-clear backpacks, thank you.
I didn't count them.
How about you, Diane? Did you see any? How about you, Wayne?
I would say the discussion of backpacks is not germane to this policy. And I believe that discussion of backpacks does not have anything to do with this entry.
You, Mary?
I did not.
And it goes back to my point, is an extra set of eyes from an employee could help the district. Yes, there were backpacks that were being carried, that they were not on their way out of the school. I peeked in buildings and I saw a non-clear backpack sitting next to students at their desks, okay? But unfortunately, this board elects to spend their time on a, watching a school board member walk around as opposed to watching the video of the children, right? And that's why I say, I think an extra set of eyes, we're employees. I'm in favor of getting a background check. We should not be seen as a threat or as a concern. Again, how many hours were spent watching me walk around? Which, by the way, let me ask you another question. How many classroom buildings did I walk into? How many classrooms did I walk into? How many students did I talk to? Okay. But another set of eyes in there, right? What's interesting is this board is more interested in watching Dave Wallace walk around after he checked in, and I had a visitor badge, because matter of fact, the lady, if you saw it, she was pushing a wheelchair and asked me for directions, and I said, I'm sorry, I couldn't help her out. And she's, and she looks, oh, she's on my badge, and so, never mind. I see. I'll ask someone else. I said, no problem, okay? But I'm sure you saw that video, right? Unless it was edited, but-
I understand what you're saying. I can honestly say I'm not interested in continuing to talk about Dave Wallace. I would really like to focus on the policy.
But I want to.
Getting it where you're comfortable with it too, where we're all comfortable with it. Because I do feel like at some point, it's not helpful, it's harmful. And what's gonna bring us together and not make us look like a threat is the more that we talk and work together and come up with things that we can all accept.
Absolutely. And I'm just sharing some other things, saying if you have a board member that is allowed to walk the buildings, not seen as a threat to security, which I find it very insulting, but that is where we have, I mean, the fact that we had a high school person put a ski mask on, go into the junior high and assault a student, and yet, we're not discussing that.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I have a point of order here.
It was on social media, Wayne, you're familiar with that.
A masked student has nothing to do with this policy.
All right, so we are going to work-
I would suggest to go back to the conversation.
We're not talking about that. We're talking about-
So, Mr. Wallace, I think has made a good point, that I think his point was good, is that you do set board policy, and then you have an expectation that your administration ensures that policies follow through their regulations. And as a board, you do have, you know, remember in the military, they always said, don't expect what you don't inspect, right? So don't expect your soldiers to do something if they don't think you're checking on them, right? So, I think the board does have some responsibility, I guess, or duty to do those things. The question is, can you as a board still do that and meet that responsibility and duty if you are being escorted? Right? Could you still see-
I am perfectly comfortable with being escorted, whether I come announced or unannounced. Maybe it's because I have a background in schools. I am fully aware of how careful you have to be, and you cannot be too careful in terms of threat assessments and being safe. It might be that that's where it's coming from, but I'm fully comfortable with that. I can say that.
I would have no problem being escorted.
Well, go on, Mary.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I went to the high school for an unescorted visit. I was told to wait because there was no escort available. I was told to sit down and wait, right? They knew I was coming. And what was interesting, and I'm sure you saw the video, the assistant principal was there on his walkie-talkie, right? As I'm being told not to go, not to walk the building.
Well, that's a legitimate thing that could be worked on.
So that's what I'm saying, if we go, I don't want to interrupt, I don't want to impact, now we worry about the teachers, I don't want to take away the principals from their jobs. Kevin had appointments all morning and afternoon, okay? I don't want it to be a distraction. I want to go in there, look at the things on the walls.
We're happy to do that, Dave. Don't worry about it being a distraction. We're happy to do that.
It didn't work out last time.
Let's go on to the policy, and I think we need to, I think we need to work on this policy a little more, clarify a little more things, and as, I guess, as a team policymakers, need to work on that.
Well, we can do that. We can come down. I feel like, like if, there's some of this that's okay from my perspective. So, I think we need to add in there that board members are welcome at our buildings.
All right.
So I think that that's a positive, to just specify that in our policy, that board members are welcome to our buildings. I do like the statement that board members must recognize that the presence in the school building could lean to. It's just a statement. It doesn't do anything either way. If a visit to a school or classroom is being made, other than general, I think that all of that is out from my perspective. And again, I'm working with you guys. I'm not-
Right.
But I do think that it's easier if you make arrangements. If you don't, then we'll find somebody to escort you, and that's not a problem. So maybe we just leave that out and we specify that if you can make arrangements, that's great. If not, we will find an escort, but you might have to wait five minutes.
I waited more than five.
I think, I agree. I think that all visits should be escorted. By, if you're a board member or anybody that wants to-
Or a guest.
Yeah, or a guest. They should be escorted.
I think it should be at the discretion of the board member if they want to be escorted or not. And if not, I think they'll need a badge and a background check.
I agree.
It's all right with that. I don't know about the badge, but a background check would be good.
I don't have any need for that, but I also am not going to balk at it if we want that to be an option.
And of course, the escort would depend on what would not interfere with class time and programming at the building. I would not want to take an escort out of their duty, just like you mentioned. That was a good point.
I don't think it would take class time or any-
Well, I mean, just take them away from what they should be focusing on.
I think it creates a safer feel in the building with an escort. So, I think that we will always make one available. If you guys decide that that's not necessary, then that's your decision. But from a school's perspective, I think that it would give the feel in the building that it was that we know who you are because you're with somebody that we know, that, you know, that sort of thing. Maybe it's my fault that people, everybody doesn't know everybody. I'll take that responsibility. But I think that the key is that unless there's a reason that an escort is a problem, which I guess I don't understand why an escort would be a problem. We're not telling you you can't go someplace.
The element of surprise is part of what you're looking for. It's gonna be there in an unannounced visit, whether the escort is with you or not. So if that's the objective there, I feel like you would still have that.
And I'm sure an escort would not, if he wanted to do, go to this part of the building, or any part of the building, there would be no problem with that.
But it would also ensure that the other guidelines are being followed.
Consistently.
Consistently, that's right. So there wouldn't be anything that would be happening that wasn't part of the procedures of the building happening.
The only thing I would add to that is, without an escort, if you stumble on something that really should be reported, you have no backup. It's just your word. You could, without an escort, you have no verification of what you saw or what happened. And I believe it would wind up as a waste of time.
All right, so how are we gonna put this? We're gonna put, board members are always welcome to our buildings?
Mm-hmm. School board members are welcome to visit school buildings.
And then-
At any time? I mean, do we want to-
Announced or unannounced.
I like that.
They will check in in the office? Because we need to know who's in the building.
Right. You have to do that.
Well, yeah.
And they will ask for an escort.
And if an escort is not available?
We'll make one available.
What is the, I mean?
Can I just throw this out here? What, I know some districts, they just inform the principal and not the superintendent?
I think we just took all of that out.
Yeah, so there's the-
If it can be unannounced, then we're not really informing anybody.
It's unannounced, okay, right. But if it's announced, does she go through you or building principal?
Just the principal.
The building principal.
That needs to be specified.
So is that's all we need?
The building wants me to come and escort, I'll come and escort. That's not a problem. A lot of times that will happen. But not always.
I think, I would be against that. I would be in favor of getting vetted and allowing the school board members and letting the staff and the teachers know who your school board members are to allow them through the building. Because the last thing I want to do is take anyone away from their time. I don't think it's a matter of gotcha. I think as a courtesy, you can send an email. You know, I don't know if it's trying to run around playing gotcha. The teachers are busy teaching, and everyone's got stuff to do. But I do think that we should have the ability to walk the buildings unescorted. At the end of the day, we work for the community. We don't, I mean-
We have, we have a principal and two assistant principals. I'm sure that there would be enough, there would be somebody there that they could have escorted you. Probably Chad could have done that, had he-
Well, that particular day, I called Dr. Harlemann, and I said, will you please make arrangements to make sure that when Dave comes there, that you can escort him around the building? So I'm sure from Dr. Huesman's perspective, I had asked Dr. Harlemann. So I'm guessing that he was following that. I didn't really care who did it. Right.
But I think that, you know, he could have, he was there. He could have escorted him. So I think, is this the way we wanted to read? Board members are always welcome to our buildings. And they should check in at the office, and they will be escorted around the buildings. Is that all right with you?
I'm fine with that, but I'm hearing that at least two people would like to not have to have an escort. So we have to give that, we have to give that some air.
I mean, what was just said, you said, Mrs. Morgan, that you would come down to escort if there's not an escort available.
No. I said that if somebody asked if I was available to come and be an escort, I'd be happy to.
I'm against it. I think as a school board-
How would you word it?
That school board members have the right to visit the school buildings at any time they seem fit, to have little impact on the building operations. That's what I'm saying. There's five of us. It's not like there's 25 of us where you gotta remember everyone's name. Just let them know, this is new policy. Here's, these five people are allowed to visit the schools. This is the community schools, and their job is to report to the community.
And the way I would want it is, board members are welcome, announced or unannounced. Once at the building, you follow the protocols of the building, and you have an escort.
That's how I would like it.
That would be what I would like. What would you want to hear, Mary?
I would just add a couple things to it. Not everyone is entitled to every part of every building. Some of that information is guarded for students' protection. So, wandering around the building or entering on alone without an escort, I believe is gonna lead to trouble.
Would you word it differently than what I said, or are you fine with the way I said it?
As long as we have an escort, someone, a trained professional. Two amateurs will not make up one professional. I've done many walkthroughs, many inspections and all of that. It always takes a team. A team has more eyes. They see better. They can improve things better. It's easier for a team to come up with a solution in situations like this and to recognize real dangers.
So you're okay with-
You know, Wayne, I think you made a really good point, that if it's a collaborative visit and you do see something that you don't like, you can discuss it with that school employee right there. So if there was a backpack that was in a classroom, that's not a policy, that's a procedure. But if there is one, then we can look at it right there. We can say, hey, why is there a backpack in there? That is, or I, you know, so- So by doing it collaboratively, Wayne, I think you hit it right on the head, that I think that that's what you want to see, is our team working together, and I think that would make a difference as well.
Mary, how would you like it worded?
I think in order, you know, just thinking about it, I would prefer that we would be able to go whenever we would want to, to have that as elected officials. But understanding the importance of collaboration and the consistency with the guidelines, I think, should be escorted. I do.
I like how you said it. Say it once more.
What do you want to, what I would suggest maybe is to have the administration write up based on what you've said, and then bring it back for a first reading again.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, Bill.
That way, because that way, there's not a question, and I don't know if it's words here or there.
Okay.
And then once you have it worded, then you can-
So the key is, I'm sorry, Bill.
Shift it out a little bit if it's not exactly the way you want it.
The key is that you can, you can visit at any time, follow protocols within the building, and have an escort.
Unannounced or announced.
Unannounced or unannounced.
Unannounced or unannounced.
Okay.
All right, so the next policy?
The next policy that we have is 0131. Wayne, this is one that you questioned just a little bit. And it was on the section of bylaws shall be adopted, amended, repealed, or suspended by an affirmative vote of three members. Policies shall be adopted, amended, or repealed, and affirmative, again, an affirmative vote of three members. Wayne, when you talked to me about it, you felt like maybe a four-member or a vote would-
Yes, I'd like to talk about that. End of June, the legislature released a 6,000-page document called the Biannual Budget. Some of them don't even, still at this time, know what's in that. We were just hit with, I don't know, roughly 650 policies. It's hard to digest all that stuff all at once. Now let's throw in another curveball here. Before the legislature, the last time I checked, was about a week ago, there's 730 new pieces of legislature, which will change all of this. So what I have to say about this? The best we can do is adopt that policy as a tentative policy, because these can change overnight, any day. So, I want to be ready when something- So I wanna be ready when something changes, we're gonna have to address it. So if it takes three members, that's fine, as long as, as long as we can show good faith that we're trying to keep up with these policies. They're gonna change, from what I'm hearing from other, other districts, that some of this won't fly.
One thing I will say about that with the budget, Bill, typically when they do that, they say, "You will have this policy and this is what it'll look like." So you don't really have much discretion as a board, whether you vote, vote on it or not, because they're requiring you to have policies. So I think this is more of the question of, how, how, how easy do you wish to make it as a board to change an existing rule? So, for instance, you know, in order to, in order to pass a piece of legislation, the legislation just needs a simple majority. In order to amend the constitution, you need a high majority, and if it's, of course, the Constitution of the United States, then you need three, three-fifths of all the states to ratify. So it makes it much harder to, to change a constitution than it does to change a law. So the issue you wanna decide as a board, is it okay to change policies that currently exist with a simple majority of the board by three votes? Or do you wish it to be more difficult by saying that you need to have a little bit more than that, you'd have four of the five? That's just really what it comes down to.
Yeah, I wasn't clear if you were looking for it to be harder or easier.
I'd like it to be easier, if that's...
I thought you meant harder.
It can't be easier, it can only be harder. Three is the minimum, we have to have a majority vote. So if we move to a four vote, then it would be harder to pass, more, more consensus in order to change it.
Right.
Three, three votes should be able to pass. If we go to four, we're gonna get bogged down.
Okay, so let's leave that the way that it is.
Yeah, we'll leave it the way it is then.
So that's already how to first read, it can go to the second read as is.
Great.
Okay. Yep, that's fine. We have a flags and display discussion, but...
I can stay if you're ready to talk about that.
You might need to stay a little bit.
Another 10, 10 to 15 minutes.
Alright.
Be late to your next meeting, that's not fair to you. Okay. We've had lots of flags and display conversation throughout the time. We then started our Neola endeavor, and Neola doesn't actually have Ohio's version of Neola. Am I right, Mary? Doesn't have a flags and display policy. So we don't have a policy to, to review. So we are right back where we were before.
I still have the one that we used from Big Walnut.
Yep, yes.
So you wanna read it? Sure. Okay. This is, it just says, "Flags and displays. This is the policy of the Little Miami Board of Education as a neutral policy in respect to the appropriate usage and display of the items in district buildings or on district property. This includes flags, banners, posters, electronic insignia, and similar items collectively displays, and is in addition to the use of the current American flag as referenced in our OSBA policy INDB. This policy applies to displays affixed to the grounds, stadium fencing, walls, doors, ceilings, or any other furnishings or appearances of any public school system building, vehicle, or the facility owned or operated by the Board of Education. This also applies to any electronic messaging, including emails on the district's networks, network, and are as follows. A, the current American flag and current state of Ohio flag. B, the current Little Miami flag or mascot. C, displays to use in the classroom as part of a temporary unit of study within the curriculum. If this may be in question of a controversial nature, please refer to the policies." And again, it was a controversial topic, cross-reference there. "Displays that denote a recognition of achievement and are approved by the superintendent as to content and location of the display. Ohio High School Athletic Association or similar sport tournament displays. Approved advertising, including visiting schools' current flag, mascot, banners, etc., recognizing the participation of or accomplishment of a school team or student. Displays from the branches of the United States military. Colleges and universities may be placed in approved locations. Flags of countries representing our foreign exchange students may be placed in approved locations by building administrators. Flyers, notices, or invitations for clubs shall be placed only on approved bulletin boards approved by building administrators. Flyers, notices, or invitations for clubs shall be no larger than eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper." There you go.
Alright, so what do we think about that?
I'm still in favor of the policy.
I am too.
I don't have an issue with it. I, I know that some of the concerns, when we were discussing it at some point, was making sure that clubs did have the latitude to be able to express what that club is about in that space and time, which it sounds like that's not an issue. And then a certain, like, limiting being able to celebrate, like, holidays and that kind of thing, which my understanding is it doesn't impact that.
Based on what I have heard from Big Walnut, it has not. And it's being well implemented in that district. And it has gone, it has faced no legal challenges for two years.
That's a good thing. Yeah, I think it's fine.
I do too.
Yes, I have something to say about that. We discussed this at length back in January. And we also learned that the Ohio ACLU gave Big Walnut a certain length of time to repeal that, because it did not pass muster. It was a violation of the First Amendment rights, also Title IX. For that reason, we had a long discussion, and I believe the outcome of that discussion is, if you really wanna adopt this, you better be ready to shell out the money, because here comes the legal process. So I think we're entering into a period here, if we adopt this, it's only gonna lead to a legal battle.
Well, that's, that's an important point to make. What do you think?
Yeah, so I think the policy on, I've looked, I'm familiar with that policy. I think the policy on its face passes legal challenge, like, how it's written, right? Because it's content neutral, and, and it doesn't necessarily take any other view over another view. The problem that I have with the potential legal vulnerability of it is that it would be, that you would have to enforce it very stringently and very consistently. And that potentially could put a lot of pressure upon your building administration, because if you say, "Well, only this, only the ones that are permitted to happen," and then you let other ones happen that we don't know about, and then someone else puts up something that we do know about, and we say, "Now, you can't do that," they point off to, "Well, this one's there, and this one's there, and this one's there, and this one's there." So that's when it becomes difficult, because it's, it's the inconsistency in the uniformity of the enforcement. So as long as you're okay with making sure, and you follow through on making sure you're consistent in your uniform and how you enforce it, I don't believe that it has any problem. If you become lax in your enforcement of it, you've set yourself up for a problem. Does that make sense?
Yes, and Neola is not going to back this policy.
No, because that's why they don't have that.
Because it's not Ohio, right.
Right.
So that's just really what it comes down to. You know, like, you have to be consistent with it. Some districts have looked at that and have, and have thought about it, and then looked at their controversial issues policy and said, "Well, we think it probably already is covered under that, so we're not gonna do that." And then others have said, "No, we wanna go a step further to ensure," and that's just really up to you. But I, I do wanna say that if you choose to do it, then you do have to remain pretty vigilant in making sure it's enforced. And sometimes we don't, because something comes up and that's not, not really offensive, or we think that's good for the kids, and all that up, and then that comes back. I have this, this saying, I say in this business, that no good deed goes unpunished. So that'll, you know, that comes back to haunt ya, so.
Just make sure we hire the right people and put them in the right positions to enforce policy. I mean, that goes down to the superintendent's responsibility to make sure her staff and everyone underneath follows, no different than any policy.
Big organization with lots of people and lots of kids, lots of spaces. So it can be sometimes difficult to know, even if you're doing everything you think is right.
So, do we wanna put this on hold again and discuss it more, or do we not have a policy and...
I have some, some, some just thoughts. Displays used in classrooms as part of a temporary unit of study, are we thinking that we are going to be putting things on the walls and taking things off the walls every time we change a unit? Because that will, what we were told from our petition that was given to us, I believe, from our, from our teachers' union, is that they'll just take everything off the walls. So our teacher, our kids will be learning in bare walls, because they don't put up and take down every unit, for the most part. They put things up that they can build on. So I'm going to put this up on unit one, and then I'm gonna leave it up and build on it with unit two, and build on it with unit three. I don't think that's a problem, I think that's good teaching and learning. And, and so that, that would cause me to have a little bit of, of concern.
I wouldn't expect a teacher to have to be constantly taking things up and down, up and down. And if it's part of the course of this, natural course of that study, of that, whatever subject it is, that it's prolonged, then to me it makes sense that it would stay up for a while.
Or all year. We have people that, you know, decorate their walls with whatever their content is, and it, and it stays up. I mean, I, I feel like if we do this, we have to be so clear. We had a huge reaction from our teachers on this policy. I just feel like we need to make sure, Mary, just like you said about the last one, we need to make sure that we are clear on, on what this, what this actually says and does. Putting our clubs and, and our organizations in one area, that's, that's not it. You know, you just have to make a big enough area. We've got a lot of clubs and organizations, well, to put up some type of bulletin board, that's not a problem, we can do that. The only flags that we allow are, are the Little Miami flag and the American flag and the, and the Ohio flag. We do have flags from, if we have a large population of students from a particular country, we might have their flag on a social studies wall. I don't, I don't have a particular concern with that. This policy wouldn't allow that. So there's some things here that, and maybe we don't allow that. I mean, that, again, you guys get to write the policy, but, but I'm just telling you things that are already there, that we have people who are huge UC fans, huge Ohio State fans. And I think learning and knowing a teacher from a standpoint other than just...
Being in front of the class, right?
Yeah, I think is important. Now, I'm not saying that it's important to know their political background, it's not. We want them to teach from a political neutral standpoint. But I think that's very different from knowing just a little bit about and connecting. We talk about relationships, and education is hugely important, right? I mean, gosh, at one time, high schools that worked, relationship was the key to the entire initiatives, right? And so by building some of those pieces, and I don't think that this is, this policy, I don't think anybody's saying that that, none of, any of those can't happen, right?
That was another one of the concerns.
But these are concerns, so we just need to make sure that we're writing it very clear for, for people to understand. Dave, you said when we talked about it the last time, I believe, "Well, that's not what we're meaning." Well, that's, then that, that's confusing. And we just, we just took confusion out of a policy. We certainly don't want to create another one and add confusion back in. So, so from my perspective, we would want to work to make sure that we get through this, where we know exactly what we're talking about. Clubs and organizations, you have to display your bulletin boards or your, your advertisements in an area. That's here, that makes...
Makes sense.
But there's no problem with that. That we allow the American flag, the Ohio State flag, the Little Miami flag, of course we allow those. We don't allow Confederate flags, we don't allow rainbow flags, we don't allow controversial flags. We do, I do have a classroom that has a Uzbekistan flag in it. I have a flag, a...
Because we have a large population.
Because we have a large population, and they are trying to build a relationship. They're trying to say, "Hey, I recognize where you are from, I, I want you to be here and comfortable in this room." So maybe that's not allowed, that's not a huge population of them, right? But I do know that we have some, but we have, the, students from Uzbekistan is our largest ESL population right now.
What I hear you're saying is that we need to sit down and write this out that would fit our needs.
And very clear.
I make a suggestion that maybe, that you, as a board, do a little bit of homework to do exactly what Dave said. Get out there in the buildings, and when, like, when the kids are not there, so you can walk the classrooms and see, "Okay, what do our classrooms look like? And if we're gonna pass a policy, what do we wanna say is good, what do we wanna say is this is something we don't want? Where, where, where..." You know what I mean? Because you don't know, you're kinda, you're kinda, kinda driving with your eyes closed right now. So get out there and look at those classrooms, and then maybe you could say, "Hey, that might go too far here, it doesn't go far enough in this area." But that would be, I mean, if I was a board member, that's what I'd wanna do. So you don't make, so you don't inadvertently do something that you're later and say, "Well, we didn't..."
You have to hire more people to meet and to, to produce what the policy says.
To police it, right?
Right, to police it, yes, thank you.
But I mean, that, that could be helpful.
We could create a special board meeting, and we could walk as a board. We can have a special board meeting and do a walk.
Steps in, exercise.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bill.
Then it goes back to the...
Are you saying I need steps?
Unescorted, walk of the building so you can see what's on the walls. And I think if we go through a, as a group, I, I think we're gonna miss the mark. I think when you walk in there without any prep or anything, you get a true snapshot. And I've gotten to see that as a, as a parent, I think it's a little bit more scripted during the open house or the, or the teacher conference, as opposed to when I went to the high school, not on that. I, I think I did get a different perspective, and it was, it was a good takeaway.
I don't disagree with you. I'm not saying for the purpose of trying to find something that you, that would be clearly, even with, under your current policy, something that you wouldn't want there. I'm wanting you to do it more so you understand kind of the environment that the kid...
How would I?
Absolutely.
Like, if I know I have a Confederate flag up, I know I'm not supposed to have that, so I'm gonna take that down. I shouldn't have it whether you're coming at all, right? I mean, so...
Should be.
So, or whatever, whatever, you know, something that's not permitted. But I'm thinking more along the lines of, like, not to inadvertently prohibit something that you would go and say, "Well, that's not really what we're talking about," right? Like, and maybe you can tailor your policy to be able to...
I think what we're gonna find is that there's really not much going on outside of this on a regular basis as it is. That's my impression.
Yeah.
Agree.
How many board members have been to the high school this year?
I have.
You've walked through the high school?
I didn't walk through.
Okay, what I'm saying, have you walked the hallways? Have you, have you seen, peeked in the classrooms? That's what I'm saying, that Mr. Dieters is saying, and not to play gotcha, it's to get a good observation and see what's going on in our buildings. That's what we're responsible for.
And I went and ate in the cafeteria, just to check out the food even, so...
Good?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Yes.
That's a whole nother story, Bob, because I don't think we're allowed to do that.
I will tell you that we can do it in a different manner, we can do it two at a time, so we're just not doing it one at a time. We can do it two at a time, and it can come unannounced. When I took through, when Terry and I walked through guests from one of our board meetings, I didn't tell a soul I was doing it.
Well, it'd be after school, so you wouldn't have to tell anybody.
Right. And, and I, and I've done that before. I didn't tell anybody until afterwards. I haven't really told that many people, well, I told them tonight, but, but I, we, I just showed up after, it was on a Saturday morning. We showed up, we walked through, I didn't tell the principal, I didn't tell anybody. And, and it's the same thing that's there on a daily basis.
That sounds like a good plan.
As much as I would like to stay and continue to have these wonderful discussions with y'all, I do have to go, so if there's anything else...
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
You got something really going on, huh, Bill?
I have other meetings.
So we could, we could do that easily, we could set it up where two people go at a time, and, and then it's not a board meeting, and it's not, and we can do it unannounced. We don't have to specify to anything.
So we'll put this one on hold until we...
Until we go through the building. Okay, that makes sense. So I will put the PO 3112, I will bring it to the... Diane, you're not gonna be at the September meeting, so I could put it back on as a first[1739.03] So I could put it back on as a first read. I can send it out to everybody, so everybody can have an idea of what it, what it, what it says. And put it on as a first read at the September meeting, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and then if it, if it goes through and it doesn't need changed again, we can put it on with all of the policies at the October meeting. The October meeting's where we have slated to approve the 650 policies and switch from the OSBA handbook or policy book to the Neola policy book.
I would like to ask a question about that. It has come to my attention, a couple more of them really don't seem to fit in our, our school district here. So when we make that vote in October, are we swallowing the elephant? Is there any chance to repeal, amend, or...
Yeah, so you can do two things. You can always, well, you probably don't wanna vote no in general, because in our thought, we are going to... Wayne, to be honest, this meeting was to have that conversation about any policies that you were concerned about. So if you want us to pull out, or if anybody, I guess, wants us to pull out a board, a board policy because you're not sure about it yet, we can pull it out, we can rediscuss it, and then go back in. But I would, I would like to not, now, again, it's your choice, but I would like to not ask for approval for each individual policy. That will take a very long time.
That is not a good...
So if there's a policy that you have concern with, let me know. I can share it out to everybody and we can pull it out of that group and we can, we can talk about it separately like we did tonight.
Okay. I, I do have a few, not many, but some. And I think I'd like to thank everybody for all their hard work, the staff, Bobby...
Yes.
Mary, Regina. You all spent a lot of time on this. There's a lot of expertise and a lot of knowledge that went into these.
Good point, Wayne.
So I'd like to thank them. And it's, you know, with whatever it is, 10,000 parents, somebody's gonna be happy and somebody's gonna be unhappy all the time.
Always, always. Alright, anything else? I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Horvath?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.[1797.41]